Some folk were saying that the LEZ wasn't needed. Firstly, a significant fall before an LEZ is introduced is consistent with all LEZ studies, as the publicity that they're coming influences bus and car purchases before their introduction. This expected fall was seen in Dundee. Further, what the Courier article didn't do, since it was an article about Dundee, was to look at other cities without an LEZ. All levels in our cities fell during COVID, but for example, in Athel Street, Perth, the levels rose again after COVID as they don't have an LEZ to keep them low. NO2 levels averaged 41 micrograms per metre cubed pre-COVID, during COVID fell to 26, but then bounced back to 37. Some areas of Fife show the same bounce back as to a number of cities across the UK. Indeed, some bounce back was seen in our own streets far from the LEZ, with PM10 pre-COVID Mainz Low being an average of 10 between 2014 and 2020, falling to seven during COVID and increasing again to nine for 2224. Further, looking at daily exceedances, which are important because acute bursts of pollution are very damaging, the number of days Seagate exceeded 40. Pre-COVID was 246 days. During lockdown it fell to 54, but after the introduction of the LEZ it was only 25 days, a very important improvement. Tentative figures show nine well admissions fell after the introduction of your LEZ. These are very provisional figures and of course I will update the council once thoroughly examined. So the failure to see further falls after COVID are likely due to behavioural changes before the LEZ and during the advisory phase. And the benefits were further masked by persistence of the low levels suggesting to some that LEZ wasn't needed. However, these levels would very likely have bounced back. Further reasons to maintain the LEZ include our work on hospital admissions showing children are much more susceptible to even lower levels of NO2. But even for adults, evidence is convincing that current levels are too high and the WHO has recommended even lower levels below the current Scottish target. The EU has ratified proposals to drop NO2 to 20 from 40 and it is very likely that Scotland will do the same. LEZ enforced Seagate has 232 days per year above 20 micrograms per metre cubed, despite falling from pre-COVID levels of 356 days. So if the LEZ were removed, you may have to reintroduce it again in 2027-28. Another argument often used against LEZ is that electric vehicles will make them obsolete. However, EVs are not compulsory for another 10 years. And remember, this is for new cars only. Second-hand and existing cars will still be around for the next 15 to 20 years, a generation of children's health that could be damaged. In conclusion, I believe the early data that you have are showing that the LEZ works to reduce pollution. Lower regulatory levels are likely to be introduced, reinforcing the need for the LEZ. And further evidence and effects on health from our study will be apparent over time when informed judgement can be made regarding the Dundee LEZ health benefits or otherwise. Thank you.
Getting how to put my microphone on. Professor Belch, thank you very much. I just thought it was important people understood what the impact was rather than just the charts. I'm happy to open up for questions if anybody wants to ask questions at this stage. Happy with that? Councillor Tolland?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you so much for that. You might not know the answer to this, it might be something that the officers can help with, but the LEZ area in Dundee, do you know how many children reside in that area? So I'm trying to get a sense of how many kids will be positively impacted.
Yes, it's actually very difficult because obviously you have a very large student population and they come and go. And of course they're here during the winter when pollution is high and away in the summer when pollution is low. You only have one school which is nearby, which is the Dundee High School, but you also have a number of schools in the Penumbra where you are actually also seeing the levels beginning to fall because of the cars driving to the LEZ. So I think the interesting thing for Dundee, because you have a small LEZ, is going to be what happens to the health of the people roundabout as the levels fall.
So then is that something that you'll be doing in your study then? Is that?
Yes, we're going to be looking at the Penumbra as well as the central places.
Thank you. And I've also got a question from councillor Short.
Thank you. You mentioned the high school year and I walked past a weaker Sogo and they actually have some advice to drivers to switch off their engines to support their young people. Is that advice that you would give to schools right across the city when children are being picked up and dropped off? Should parents either walk them there, let them go on their bikes or switch off engines when they're around?
Yes, it's been great to have your support against the idling. It's very disheartening that actually in January this year, when we look back, there were only two prosecutions for idling. I think what people don't realise is that when you idle, your pollution level in the car is three times higher than it is in the street. And a lot of mums and dads come along with babies and preschool children sitting in the car with them. We were really quite concerned about the children because adults, they've had some life, but also they can often throw off a chest infection or treat their asthma. But with children, the effects are absolutely permanent. You're seeing decreased lung growth, heart disease, blood pressure problems already. So yes, very important to restrict idling and to enforce it if we can.
Thank you very much. Looking at Mrs May, I know we have a committee that looks at the banners around idling for schools. I think that's an important fact to put on the banners that it's actually pollution inside the car is three times worse. I didn't know that. You learn something every day. Thank you.
Yes, that was great when I saw the banners coming out. One of your colleagues let me know and excellent, excellent, really good to see.
Okay, I can't see any other questions. You're very welcome to stay for the whole evening or we're very happy for you to leave at this point. Thank you very much for your time. So Veronica, we'll just go to the report now. So item two is the air quality update on the low emissions zone report. The committee have been asked, well, you will, some of you will remember that back in 2006, there was an air quality management area established. And we've basically been following up on this since 2006. The report that you have before you asked you to note the, oh, sorry, I've got a question for officers, sorry, I didn't see that. Well, I'll go back. Take it after, right. So the report is asking us to note the positive results of the air quality monitoring across Dundee for 2004 and also allow the executive director of city development to submit the new requirement for the LEZ, the annual LEZ report, which is in appendix four. In your appendices, you've basically got the ratified data in appendix one for 2024. Appendix two is provisional data for January to April 2025. Appendix three has the actions that we're taking in addition to the LEZ and appendix four is the LEZ report. And so I can see that I have some questions. I've got councillor Crichton first.
Thank you, convener. I've got two quick questions if I may. The first one is on appeals. There's over 2,500 appeals received and 34% are successful. Most of these are due to blue badge holders or vehicle compliance. I assume this is picked up in the initial appeal stage, just asking for clarification on that one. And then the second one is in relation to unsuccessful applicants are eligible to refer their case to Scottish Transport Appeals. The tribunal who act independently as adjudicator, up to the 31st of March of this year, 19 cases have been submitted, of which 11 were upheld. Just wondering if there was any themes and lessons we can learn.
Thank you councillor Crichton. Can I ask, is it Mr McNaughton who can respond to those things?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thanks for the question, councillor Crichton. Firstly, with the appeals, the successful blue badge appeals, yes, they do go through in the initial phase. So blue badge holders can register on the national system to have their vehicles exempt. There's a number of ways they can contact that, like telephone or online. For those that don't, if they're carrying a passenger with a blue badge and they appear a ticket, then that will be overturned. On the second question about the adjudicator upheld points, there was only 11. There was a number of, they were all various different reasons. There have been some adjustments being made to the scheme since regard to additional signage. So the signage has been implemented in standard with the requirements and the guidelines of the scheme, but we've supplemented that with some additional signage outside of the zone. So not just on the entry gateways, but actually in advance of the entry gateways, just to clarify the zones. As I say, it's a point of fairness about whether or not people knowingly were entering the zone at all.
And so, Crichton, can I ask, are you happy with that response or do you have a follow-up?
No, I'm happy. Thank you very much.
And next question is from councillor Short.
Thank you, convener. It's a follow-up really to my question to the professor with regards to cars and idling. And you'll be able to keep me this right with this because you'll be better than me, I hope, about the manufacture of cars. And I believe more and more we're getting to the stage where cars are automatically switching off themselves anyway. And can you correct me if I'm wrong? My understanding would be that it's very difficult to enforce idling because number one, you can just switch it off. And number two, it can be quite confrontational. So we wouldn't want to put a situation where somebody would be in fear of, you know, tackling a member of the public. And in reality, should we be good parents, grandparents, carers, citizens, and actually doing it automatically to help support our young people?
Mr McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you for the question. You're right, the technology on a number of fronts with a number of different things will add benefit in years to come, making it the default to switch off engines and some other things like that as well. In terms of enforcement, there is, it's quite old legislation and there's a bit of a grey area between what is defined as waiting and what is defined as idling. So in essence, a lot of that depends on whether or not somebody's sitting in their car while it's idling. But you're entirely right. I thought Professor Belch's deputation very much summed up some of the benefits for society, particularly around the air pollution, infant deaths, early deaths, other health conditions. And it really is incumbent on us all to recognise the damage that pollution does and some of the easy things that we can do to mitigate that. So yeah, the onus is on us all as society to improve air quality and make those small steps that we can do to achieve that.
And then I've got councillor McHugh.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. That better? Apologies. I have two questions. I hope they'll be allowed. One relates to air quality and the other is about penalties. My first question, it's very heartening to note the positive results on air quality in this report. References made to the COVID-19 pandemic effect in reducing nitrogen oxide concentrations and tables two to seven show falling annual levels in five out of six locations. I did notice though, a huge outlier in January 2024, where a level of 48.8 is recorded for Brody Ferry Road. Results for particulate matter, however detailed in tables eight to 19, return a slight but consistent increase in all 12 locations since 2020. While all of these results fall well within the statutory air quality objectives and the benefits of good air quality for the health of our population is well documented as outlined by Professor Bell tonight, can officers comment on whether the consistent rise in particulate matter is expected and provide assurance that this is being closely monitored and that all necessary actions are and will be taken to minimise these increases going forward?
So we'll take that question first and I'll come back to councillor McHugh. Mr Hamilton?
Thank you, convener. I hope members are satisfied that the annual report that they receive on air quality does demonstrate that we are taking this matter seriously and closely monitoring the situation. We do intend to bring an updated air quality action plan to committee later this year for the committee's approval. And again, I think that will be a further demonstration of our commitment to improving the situation in Dundee and hoping that the positive information that we've received continues and that we continue to drive down the pollution that we see in our air in the city.
And so, Hugh, are you happy with that question? And hopefully you'll have an analysis of any clips. Take your second question.
Thank you. Section 4.2 of the report tells us that more than 2,500 appeals against the LEZ penalty charge were received between June 24 and March 25. 34% of these were successful, the equivalent of one in three appeals being allowed. This seems rather a high rate. Can officers comment on this and on what changes can be put in place to ensure that drivers are not being penalised unnecessarily?
Come back to you, Mr McNaughton, you'll have the answer.
Yeah, thank you, convener. As noted in the report, it does state what the most common reasons for appeals are by vast. It's the blue badge. It's the blue badge appeals. And this was something that was scoped on the outset when the project was accepted at a national level about how to manage blue badges. And it was accepted at that time that there was no one stop solution for blue badge holder appeals and that anyone should be able to be in a car which doesn't need to be registered with a blue badge. And there's a variety of different reasons for that. So it is an accepted part of the system, but we all have a high level of blue badges. It is hoped going forward that the that will form as more people register and that will take the volume up. Thank you.
I think we'd be better without these, but never mind. And it seems to be mainly the blue badges. And I've got one final question from councillor Lynn.
Yeah, thank you, convener. I should perhaps have asked this question of the deputation, Bruce. It's worth a shot, just in case. The deputy, the lady from the deputation referred to a potential decrease in the limit from forty to twenty. I can't remember what the metric is, but that's the one, the first table. I'm wondering, do you have any information on the likelihood of if and when? And if, what, what, what would be the the impact on on health, given that there were seventeen hundred deaths? I'm not sure if that's UK wide or Scotland wide, but, you know, people are obviously dying. Still, particularly of health problems because of emissions. Any indication of what difference production at twenty would make?
Can I ask, I think it'd be Mr Many, whether I could allow Professor Belch to answer that since she's still here?
Yes, convener. It'd probably be helpful if that question was asked separately and answered separately for the benefit of all members.
Professor Belch, do you like to come up? I hope you heard the question. If you could, if you could come to the microphone, that would be great.
Thank you for that question. And I sit on the Scottish Government Advisory Committee for Air Pollution. And obviously, a lot of the work is confidential. And and so what I I would suggest is that the council itself might like to contact the air quality group at the Scottish Government to ask what the proposals are. And to me, it seems very likely that twenty is going to be brought in as Scotland has always been extremely quick to respond to the WHO recommendations. And the timeline is CAF two, as you know, finishes just in a a couple of years, not even a couple of years, year and a half. And it probably will be introduced for CAF three, if it's coming, if I can't tell you. But so I I do think it is quite important, looking at the number of exceedances that one has over twenty.
Thank you very much. Right. So if we move back to the report, we're basically being asked to note and the monitoring, the results of the quality, air quality monitoring in twenty twenty four and to remit to the executive director of city development to submit the LEZ report. Are people happy with that? And are people also happy for me to write the letter to the person who's just been mentioned to find out what the answer to the question is? I'll be briefed on how to phrase that. But that's us for this evening. Thank you.
Well, good evening and welcome to the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Can we have the first item, please, Laura?
Thank you. Item one, declarations of interest. Do any members have any declarations?
Don't see any declarations in the chat or in the room, so we'll just move to item two, please.
Item two, environmental improvement works twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks to gain approval for the next phase of environmental improvement works across the city, including fencing works. Improvements of various public toilets and infrastructure works to Berwick Hill, Balgate and Birkell Grove cemeteries. You can see we've got a few questions in the chat. So councillor, sorry, Bailey Scott first, please. No, sorry, councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, convener. No, I'm just to say pleased to see mention of some, what are described as some minor upgrades to the toilet facilities on the windmill car park in Castle Green. I think any improvement's always welcome. But really, my question is around the the facility, particular way the windmill car park in recent years have had quite a number of complaints and requests to have it upgraded a bit more substantially. And I just wondered if officers can shed any light on is there any prospect of a significant upgrade there anytime soon?
That's councillor Duncan. Maybe take that off table, but ask Mr McNaughton in the first instance. Mr McNaughton?
Thank you, convener. Or maybe defer to my colleague Catherine Conroy.
Thanks for the question, councillor Duncan. So I can confirm that in the windmill car park, there's enhancement works that'll include the installation of sanitaryware and there's other various minor upgrades, but it is a and an upgrade that will cover everything that needs to be done there at the windmill toilets. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. And are you happy with that, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, I mean, I understand it's going to be minor upgrades, but what I was driving at is there any plans to make it more substantially upgraded that we know of?
Sorry, cut you a little bit, but I'll maybe just bring in Catherine Conroy again. And again, maybe she could take that off table with you.
I can, thank you. I can just confirm that there's nothing substantial at this time, but we're keeping a watching brief on it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Lynn, please.
Thank you, convener. My question is regarding citywide fencing improvements on page three and in particular the reference made to Baxter Park. I wonder, could I just have confirmation that the the tender referred to from Ballantyne Casting will involve the the gaps in the fence, which have been there since the storm in October twenty twenty three. The fencing being reinstated at these points in a sympathetic manner to to the existing fencing, please.
Thanks very much, councillor. And I'll bring in Catherine Conroy again, please.
Thanks, convener. And thanks for the question, councillor. So I confirm that in relation to Baxter Park, the specialist works have been required due to the significant storm damage that did take place. So that will be addressed fully by the contractor Ballantyne Castings. Thank you.
Thanks. Is that a sufficient answer, councillor?
Yeah, well, my question was, will it be, when I said sympathetic, what I meant really was, will it be identical to the existing fencing? I don't think that was really answered in the response.
Thank you. Catherine, please.
I confirm that that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey Scott, please.
My question's about the toilets at Windmill Car Park as well. I'll have to say, first of all, how pleased I am to see these works progressing. I've been bending the ear of the Environment Department for a long, long time, telling them how we're letting the side down after a wonderful new cycle path has been installed and all the environmental improvements there. And the toilets were in a pretty poor condition. So really pleased to see that work happening. But in the last few days, I've spoken to the Environment Department about the the changing places toilet there and whether that would be included. And I'm told it is, but I just wanted to clarify that because there is no mention of it in the committee report. And I really think that should be included in there or we get confirmation that's happening. And in particular, the hoist in the changing places toilet. I had someone on the phone to me over the weekend who was aware this was coming up. And they've said they've not been able to use the hoist for their adult person that they care for for a long time. So I wanted to make sure that that was being taken care of as well.
Thanks very much for the questions, Bailey Scott. Can I bring you in again, Catherine? And can you speak up a little bit, please? Because it's not coming across clearly. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. And thank you, Bailey Scott. I confirm that the changing places toilet is included within that and it will be upgraded. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Is there any further questions on item two? I don't see any. Can this be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Laura.
Thank you. Item three, sourcing strategy for the provision of headstone safety work in cemeteries, and this is for approval.
So this report presents a summary of a sourcing strategy and seeks approval to award a tender for the provision of cemetery heads and safety works to ensure compliance with health and safety legislation with anticipated annual spend being fifty thousand pounds over a five year period. Are there any questions on this item firstly? No, I don't see any questions. Councillor Coleman, you've got an amendment. Do you want to speak to that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Convener. I'd be grateful if committee services could circulate the amendment as usual. And it's our usual amendment in that we, it's a longstanding and consistent group position that matters up to two hundred thousand pounds could be delegated, but thereafter should be brought back to committee and I won't hold us for much longer than to formally move my amendment.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor Duncan, do you want to speak to your second then?
No, that's fine. I'm just second, councillor Coleman.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it's a long standard position that you've held. We'll just move straight to vote, please, Laura.
Thank you, convener. Do you have a second?
Second, though.
Sorry, Mr Many. Do I have a second there?
Apologies. You're happy to second up.
Thank you. The vote, please, Laura.
Thank you. So the convener's seconded by councillor Tolland has moved that the report be agreed as submitted. As an amendment, councillor Coleman, seconded by councillor Duncan, has moved as circulated. Convener.
The motion.
Councillor Black.
Motion.
Lord Profess Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Profess Cordell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor El Natla.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Mills.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Bailey Soares.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
The motion, please.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Councillor Cookshank.
Motion.
Councillor McHugh.
Motion.
Councillor McCarvin.
Motion.
Councillor Scullen.
Motion.
Councillor Shears.
Motion.
Bailey Wright.
Motion.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
And Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So that is twenty one votes for the motion and four for the amendment.
Thank you, Laura. Move to the next item, please.
Thank you. Item four, tenders received by city development, and this is for approval.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a total of four tenders with a combined expenditure in a region of one point eight four million for construction and infrastructure work across the city. These tenders comprise inspection, testing and maintenance of air handling and air conditioning systems, the first phase of Arda Community Centre flat roof replacement, construction of a pocket park in Locky Centre and upgrade and maintenance of parking meters. Are there any questions on this item? Just give that a minute. I don't see any questions in the room or online. Can this item be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Laura.
Item five, bus real time information system operation and maintenance contract procurement, and this is for approval.
This item seeks approval to engage in a collaborative procurement led by Perth County North Council for the operation and maintenance of the bus real time information system. Councillor Scullen, you've got a question, please.
Hi, yeah, I do. I was just wondering if this will also include the company putting up posters for timetables, maps, bear information, et cetera, in bus stops.
Thank you, Councillor Scullen. Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. I can confirm that that's undertaken as a separate exercise internally by Dundee City Council.
Thanks very much. Does that answer your question, councillor Scullen?
Yeah, I just wondered, will this be getting done anytime soon as there doesn't seem to be much information in the bus stops?
Thank you. Mr. McNaughton?
Thank you, convener. Confirm we've got an ongoing rolling programme for the timetables and maps inside bus shelters.
Thank you. Councillor Crichton, please.
Thank you, convener. It's going off what councillor Scullen has just said, but members of our group are very regular report real time information is not working at bus shelters. We get a lot of constituents telling us this. And it's a wider issue about information not displayed widely. And for example, most recently, stagecoach services not really displaying at our bus stops. And I'm aware the real time information system is years old. So are officers confident that just renewing the contract is sufficient to ensure stable systems going forward? And at what point does upgrade or renewal of the system required to be considered?
Thanks for the question, councillor Crichton. It is for the operation and maintenance of the system. But I'll just get clarification again from Mr. McNaughton on that. I'm sure any feedback on the system not working would be very helpful. But Mr. McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you for the question, councillor Crichton. And we do review all the reports of faults with the system. And we don't receive that many for how many of the the units that we do have. We've got about three hundred throughout the city. And as all technology does have faults from time to time. And one of the main themes tends to be the the connection with the the timetable, which is programmed by a third party, which is operated by the the bus operators. So there's a number of different parties involved in feeding the information in, but that does tend to be one of the areas. And so there's a number of things that we can work with partners to try and improve on. But in terms of technological fault, they do tend to be few and far between.
Thank you, Mr. McNaughton. Does that answer the question, councillor Crichton?
I think this is an ongoing problem, and obviously it's not just under the council stakeholders as well. But I think stagecoach, I've been hearing for quite a few years, there's been a few issues, but we'll keep it, we'll monitor the situation, maybe bring this up at a further committee.
Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions on this. So apologies. Councillor Short?
And it was just a small comment to reflect on the fact that when I certainly report that the real time information isn't correct or it's not working, and it's usually a really quick turnaround. And so it does, it's, it doesn't hang around for a long time. So if they're not working and that sort of idea, it's really good, the service that we have when it's not working properly. So thank you. And thanks to the team for all of that.
You can, so short, I'm sort of, we appreciate that. I don't see any further questions in the room now or online. So can this be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Laura.
Item six, Dundee transient visitor levy, and you're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item provides an overview of the powers granted to local authorities by the Visitor Levy Scotland Act twenty twenty four and seeks approval to commence engagement with a range of stakeholders to explore the potential for a visitor levy to be introduced in Dundee and to bring a report back to committee. I think, as I've already said, I think all local authorities have a duty to look into all potential fundraising endeavours to spare the public purse. And this is the very start of a process. It seeks to get the views of stakeholders and find out what the impact might be. So I'm just looking and is that councillor Duncan first, please?
Yep, thanks, convener. Yeah, just having a look at the report at four point eleven, it states that the visitor levy provides an opportunity to offset some of the additional costs to the city in supporting visitor experiences and investing in the visitor economy, which is fine. But Brody Ferry obviously provides a very significant share of visitors to Dundee. And they're always taking assurances that, you know, if if this levy were ever to come to pass, and at the moment that is if, because this is just a consultation. I would like to think that, you know, the the any proceeds from such a levy would actually be directed towards the area that actually raised it. That's point one. Point two, I'd like to also to have assurances that the short life working group will actually engage with organisations such as the Brody Ferry Traders Association to get their value. organisations such as the Brotty Ferry Traders Association to get their valuable input.
Thanks very much, councillor Duncan. I think there's an element of not counting the chickens before they're hatched and spending this money several years in advance. But I'll bring in Mr. Hamilton just to answer the question in terms of stakeholder engagement. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, convener. Certainly in terms of the second question, we will be engaging widely with a range of stakeholders, including organisations such as Brotty Ferry Traders. I think as the convener mentions, we're at a very early stage in this process and if the council does decide that we must move forward after the stakeholder engagement, we would need to bring forward a scheme for the visitor levy that we set out, how the money is raised could be spent. But I think that's at a stage further down the line. At this stage, we're very much at the point of just asking people for their views on the potentials.
Thanks very much, Mr. Hamilton. Does that answer your question, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, to an extent. I mean, I'm aware, I think we're all aware that nothing is going to be decided tonight, you know, one way or the other. But it's just the way that I think that if such a scheme were ever to come forward, then I think it would be good to bear in mind where the money actually comes from.
Yeah, I do think that people visit Dundee for other areas than just Brotty Ferry, but I think we're very far away from that stage of divvying up monies, but I think we'll bear in mind when we get to that stage. Thank you. Councillor Shears, please.
Very much. My question is kind of related to what was just discussed there, so I might not be able to get an answer tonight. But just to say that we're glad this is finally on the table and it's been talked about for a long time. I think coming a bit late gives us a little bit of an advantage as well with Edinburgh, Glasgow and Aberdeen all launching it before us. Certainly, I don't think we can compete with Edinburgh when it comes to tourism, but I'd like to think we can beat Aberdeen. So hopefully, as part of the consultation, we're speaking to those councils as well to find out what's happening there. And I think Edinburgh's will be implemented before our consultation committee meeting even comes ahead. But my question was, again, on four point eleven, I saw something that Edinburgh have said they do is to dedicate a certain percentage of what's raised into affordable housing. And given what the housing situation in the city, I would be very keen if we did go through with this, that that would be something that we could look at as well. So within the engagement, when we speak to people like Brotty Ferry Traders Associations, hotels and things like that, is that something that we'll be asking their opinions on? Sort of, should this money be reinvested in tourism? Is it something that we can use to improve the city for residents as well as tourists? Or is that money just going to be ours in a separate fund for us to use as we please? I think there's still a bit of confusion about what the legislation actually means there.
Thank you, councillor Shears. I think it's a very good point about learning from other authorities that have gone first and I'm sure the officers are engaging with those other authorities. I will just pass on again to Mr. Hamilton just to explain the adoption of the process that we're looking at. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, convener. I think paragraph four point two does quote from the legislation about what the money should be used for. And it's for developing, supporting or sustaining facilities or services which are substantially or are used by persons visiting the area. But as councillor Shears notes in paragraph four point one one, we do highlight some of the initiatives that are being followed by Edinburgh in relation to its visitor levy. I think one of the things that we need to do through the stakeholder engagement and the early investigation is to establish the likely amounts that could be raised by the revenue in any visitor levy in Dundee. And I think as councillor Shears notes, it's going to be dramatically less than Edinburgh. I think once we have that information and with the stakeholder engagement, it would then be a more appropriate time to have a conversation about how the money could be utilised. But I think an understanding about the quite broad spectrum of impacts that the visitor economy has, not just on those visiting Dundee, but also those resident, I think it's fair to say that we will be open-minded in the matters that we consider.
Thanks, Mr. Hamilton. I think that's a very helpful answer. Councillor Shears, she'll happily do that. So thanks very much. Bailey Scott, please. Actually, can I take councillor Short before, if that's all right, Bailey Scott? Thank you. Councillor Short?
Thank you, convener. I am going to get a bit bougie here. It's been about ten years since I've been to Paris and I went back in March and I just got the flag on my life because he explained to me that we'd have to pay the tourist tax and he got his numbers a little bit mixed up. Instead of asking me for six euros for three nights, he asked me for sixty. And I know that we're looking at a percentage here, but one of the things that probably goes completely against the voices that we've had so far, being a city centre councillor and also someone who is frequently involved in sport, often our hotels are full of people at the weekend. Just last weekend, it was a roller derby tournament that was on in Manhattan Works. So tourism isn't just about Brotty Ferry and hotel rooms aren't just about Brotty Ferry. It's about the wider city, because these people were living, were on the Kingsway and they were in the city centre. So I just wanted to point that out and I want to say that actually I'm really, really pleased to see this coming. We do have, I mean, if you think back ten years ago, the amount of hotels that we had, it was very little and there's been a lot of investment to get people to come to the city. And I don't think one or two pounds here and there is going to stop them from coming, especially when they see what we've got on offer and keep coming back. Thank you, convener.
Thanks, councillor Short. I think that's a very helpful comment and I think part of what we're just starting tonight really is that the fact it's the start of a process and getting that ball rolling, there's nothing decided yet. And really, what we're doing is seeking those stakeholder views and getting information about how it may work, how much funding might be raised, et cetera, and the impacts. So I think it's helpful to have all that context. So that's very useful and I thank everyone for their contributions. I don't see any further comments. I wonder, Bailey Scott, if you would like to speak now, please?
I would just like to move that we take no action, convener. I have nothing to circulate because I'm just moving a direct negative of the proposal. I've always been opposed to a visitor levy and when it was mooted in your budget motion in February, I said I was opposed to it then and I continue to be opposed to it. I think the Scottish government should be providing sufficient in their funding allocation to local authorities to fully support tourism, the tourism sector. And I've always been concerned about the impact a tourist tax would have on attracting visitors in what is a very, very competitive market and the consequential impact there will be on shops and other businesses that rely on the tourist trade. And there's also the burden that will be, the administrative burden will be on businesses to collect the tax. I don't think there's a need for it. The funding should come from the Scottish government, so I'll continue to be opposed to it. And I won't have a second, but I ask for my dissent to be recorded in the minute.
Thanks very much, Bailey Scott. Appreciate that. That's a point in principle for you. What I would say is this is the start of a process in terms of understanding that impact of the visitor levy. We can't understand that impact until we start the ball rolling and get that information. But I appreciate you want your views and I'm sure they can be noted for the record. Thank you. I don't see any further comments or any other disagreements, so can this be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Laura.
Thank you. Item seven, business improvement district Dundee city centre, and this is for committee to agree.
Thanks very much. So this item updates the committee on emerging proposals for a business improvement district or a bid in the city centre. Members are asked to note that further reports will be submitted for consideration later in 2025 in advance of the proposed ballot, which is anticipated to take place in March 2026. So the question from councillor Shears. Is that right? Yes, okay.
My laptop's just restarted itself. I had my question written down, which is annoying as well. And so before I got this report, I hadn't actually heard of a BID, so I did a bit of research into it and it does seem to be very mixed reviews on what's happening. So I'm just wondering, as part of the discussions, will we be speaking to local authorities and BIDs in places where they're already set up, such as Edinburgh, Glasgow, I think Immaness has a particularly successful one to make sure that if this does come to pass, we are getting it right.
As always, councillor Shears, I can confirm that that's the case whilst the business is being led by the private sector. I know there's a case going on with those other successful authorities, but maybe pass it to Mr. Hamilton for more confirmation on that.
Convener, I was probably just going to say what you've said. So the business community that is proposing the bid is supported by Scotland's Towns Partnership, which works with bids across Scotland. So I think a lot of the learning from those established bids will be used to inform any proposal that emerges in Dundee and moves towards the ballot. But if this is something that is led by business and we are working with the business community to support them in their endeavour.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Thanks, councillor Shears. This is for noting. I don't see any questions, so, sorry, is that councillor? I'm getting behind in the notes here. Councillor Lynn, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I wish the office bailors who have already been appointed to stakeholder meeting group all the best in pursuing this. There was an attempt to form a business improvement district eight, nine, maybe ten years ago and was unsuccessful at the time because it didn't gain enough support. I think the city centre has been through a very difficult time, what with the impact of Covid, the impact of online shopping, and I think really anything that can be done to make the city centre a more attractive place is to be welcomed. And, you know, just, I think yesterday we had Fraser's opening the old Debenhams store in the Overgate Centre and that's, I think that's a really big step in terms of bringing more people onto the city centre. I welcome that. And I welcome and wish all the best, as I say, to the group that are trying to take this forward. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Lynn. And we just maybe note on that point that the progress has been very impressive as far as I'm concerned so far. They have ambitious targets of delivering for next year and indeed we're doing an update later on in the year. So they've done very well so far and sticking to those targets to bring it forward. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you. I was recently at lunch at the Never Cars, which was held by the Rotary and a gentleman spoke to me at that and indicated that he wasn't quite convinced that the bid was a requirement because he felt that as a small city, it was very easy to interact with the corridors of power. Now, my understanding is that this is much wider and can perhaps add value where we no longer have that ability to do so. But my question is, presumably there is still very much good dialogue between officers and the business community out there.
Thanks, councillor Short. What I would maybe say is that bid isn't a replacement or rather enhancement of certain things the council would normally do. There's, as the report notes, service level agreements would have to be in place in order for that to progress. So there would be, as I say, additionality to whatever was brought in via a bid. A bid, sorry. I'll bring in Mr. Hamilton before I trip over my tongue anymore.
Convener, yes, we do continue to engage with the city centre business community. I think most members will know of the city centre manager and the work that she does to engage with them. I think, as you say, the bid requires the council to guarantee a baseline of services, so we will continue to talk to businesses and other stakeholders in the city about what we do. But through the engagement and the bid process, in developing the proposal that might ultimately go to the ballot, there will be a need to talk to those businesses to understand what they would like to see and it would be to listen to all views that are expressed. And we know that not everyone will be in support, but that's the next step for the steering group to take forward.
Thanks very much. Again, this report's for noting. I don't see any other questions, so can this be noted? Thank you. Next item, please, Laura.
Thank you. Item nine, Dundee city events, and this is for approval.
Yes, do we have, I think we've got item eight first, is that right?
Oh, apologies. Item eight, development plan scheme 2025, and this is for approval.
So this seeks approval of the development plan 2025, sets up the programme for reviewing the Dundee local development plan. Any questions on this? Just give everyone a minute. I don't see any in the room or online, so can this be approved? Thank you. Next item, please, Laura.
Thanks. Item nine, Dundee city events, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval to deliver events, celebrating the switch on with the city centre Christmas lights at the start of the festive period and then the annual Dundee Hooly on St Andrews Day. Committee is also asked to agree a sourcing strategy that will allow additional activities to take place during the period leading up to Christmas in the city centre, noting these should be affordable to Dundee families and have a strong community focus. Councillor Coleman, you've got a question or comment on item nine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Convenor. I'm very pleased to see at four point four that the report accepts that a Christmas switch on event of lights in the large Gensmore Square is viewed as a valued event in the calendar, indeed. Many constituents and actually residents across the city have spoken to me and saying what a valuable thing that was and was very disappointed but I don't mean around. And it's something that our group has continually raised for the past five years since they were sadly banned. That was a bad decision and the return of the tree and lights is to be welcomed. With regard to the information at four point five, it is proposed to offer the opportunity to other parties to use the city square throughout December for activities. No financial support will be offered by the council to support this element. Have officers, sorry, have officers got evidence of demand and have they had any engagement with commercial providers? So we can have confidence that this opportunity will be taken up?
Hi, reverse councillor Coleman. You'll be aware that there's a variety of events that take place throughout the year in Dundee, but we do value and have tried to support the Christmas trade over that period in time in order to support the businesses in the city centre. And that's taken a variety of guises over the years and the administration's taken the decision to prioritise, as I say, supporting businesses with events over that Christmas period in the city centre. What I would say is, I understand there's been a number of approaches to officers, but I'll just pass over to Mr. Hamilton.
Convener, yes, I can confirm we have had conversations with prospective interests. And in order to be fair and transparent, that's why we're going through this process. Of course, we can't guarantee a positive outcome, but that's certainly the intention that we're working towards.
Thanks very much, Mr. Hamilton. Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor El Natla, please.
Thank you. I noticed in the report, and you said yourself, that to try and make the activities, they should be affordable. Now, obviously, affordable can mean different things to different people. How do you ensure that when we're using private companies and we're not funding the activities, that things are affordable and how do we gauge that? I know last year there was a lot of discussion around the Santa event and it was too expensive for some children to visit Santa and, you know, how do we encourage community events? I'm just wondering how we kind of gauge that kind of moving word.
Thank you, councillor Natla. Mr. Hamilton?
Thanks, convener. Thanks for the question. I think in the approach that we're taking, we're asking parties to submit information about what they intend to do. And within that, it would include details of what the likely charges would be. And then it would be an assessment based on the quality and deliverability of the proposal. But I think we are mindful of the challenges that families across the city face and will work hard to ensure that there are activities which people can participate in and are not excluded on the basis of cost.
Yes, El Natla?
Yeah, so just again, a follow-up would just be then with that of the event being, you know, in six months' time, is there a time to consult at least some community groups around what would be deemed affordable for certain activities? Or is that just something that we can't really do?
Convener, I'm not sure that time is available to do that. However, there will be a panel of council officers that will be involved in the assessment. And it would be possible certainly to include representatives from communities in that process so that that voice of communities is heard.
Thanks very much. Councillor McHugh, please.
I just want to say, I cannot express how happy I am that there's to be a large Christmas tree in a switch on event in city square. And as a sometime representative of older people across the city, we are absolutely delighted. So thank you for this proposal.
Thanks very much, councillor McHugh. That's very much appreciated. I'm sure officers will appreciate that, given the work that's gone into putting this together so far. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convener. As we discuss what happens in the city centre and I am hopeful that the city centre and Harbour Community Council can come up with a plan to be part of the celebrations, however. At this point, I'd like to put on record how much I admire our communities, whether it's Minas Hill, Lochie, Brotty Ferry, Stoveswell, Hilltown, up in Whitfield. Across the board, communities are doing really, really excellent things to provide for their communities within their communities. And I really look forward to seeing us delivering, as others have said, the tree that for once my mother would complain to me that it's not there and the switch on, but then give it a little bit of extra oomph as well. And hopefully it will be a ho, ho, ho this Christmas.
Thanks very much, councillor Short. Don't see any further questions or comment, so can this be approved? Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item ten, sustainable transport corridors, and this is for noting.
So as Laura said, this item notifies the committee of the tender awards for the design phase of the Lockingar Road sustainable transport corridors, which has received approval from group leaders in group leaders in March, given the timeline involved. Can this be noted? Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you. The following items are confidential. Our committee happy to deal with these in the usual manner.
You're unhappy to agree with this in the usual manner? Councillor Creighton, please.
This is a question on a confidential item we're required to ask the press and public to leave. So could I suggest we take it at the end of the evening's business?
Councillor Creighton, are you happy for us to do that till the end of the evening?
More than happy.
What was that? Sorry, councillor Creighton?
I'm more than happy for that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That is us at the end for just now, and we'll reconvene at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Convenor. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
Billy Dawson.
Convenor, probably myself and the rest of those who sit on the leisure and culture board in relation to item six.
I think we're taking that as noted. But thank you.
Item two, future of Balmassey Fire Station.
Placed on the agenda, request of the Deputy Lord Provost. So Kevin, please.
Thank you, Chair. Back in 2013, the following were my comments on the speculations surrounding...
Lord Provost, if you have a motion, perhaps you could ask committee services if they could...
I do. Committee services could share that whilst I talk. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so speculation surrounding the future of Balmassey at that time. So I was sorry to see the spectre of closure being raised once more in respect of Balmassey Fire Station. The local community, politicians and fire brigade union have vigorously opposed all such attempts previously, and those who raise this issue need to bear the wishes of the community in mind. There should be no issue with the number of fires attended by Balmassey's engines, as this is actually testimony to the magnificent safety work this station carries out throughout the Broody Ferry area and beyond. It would surely be a sad irony if, in becoming a victim of its own success, its closure left Broody Ferry less well protected. So with the news that Balmassey may be facing the threat of closure once more, those comments seem as relevant now as they did then. Given the ferry's expanding boundaries, I do not believe it makes any sense to include Balmassey in any conversations around possible closure. And as my further belief that as my motion lays out, this would be a retrograde step and one that would raise safety concerns not only in Broody Ferry, but throughout Dundee and the wider areas surrounding the city. I would also further add that the current co-location with the Scottish ambulance service is also one that should be recognised as a positive innovation in our community. And it should not be threatened either by a change in the service provision at that site. So with those comments, I would move that motion for committee's approval, if possible.
Thank you for these comments. I see you've come to our short to second, and then we've got some other contributors. So Lynne, please.
Thank you very much, Convenor. As the Deputy Lord Provost has said, ambulances are based at the fire station. And personally feel this is a really, really integral part of the delivery of our blue light service. The expanse to the east of the city has grown and grown from Broody Ferry right to our road. Now, it's just so completely different than it was a number of years ago. So having that asset there, very close to the very large body of public. So although we are Dundee City Council, I'm actually calling on this as a greater Dundee question, if we can do that without getting into trouble from our friends in Angus and Perth and Conroth, because it really is about this wider city. The other thing was that I met a couple of the crew a couple of weeks ago at Blackness when they were doing some work with our young people from across the schools. And I had mentioned the fact that within the city, we tend not to have that wider community element within our fire stations like they do in Kerry Muir, Forfar, et cetera. However, I stood corrected because that's exactly what they do at Balmassey. They have the scouts, they have the cubs, they have the coffee mornings, et cetera. And they are really an integral part of that community. So it really is an asset there. So that is why I am very keen to second my colleague and hope that the rest of the committee are like minded. Thank you, Convenor.
Thanks for that. I've got councillor Duncan next. Craig.
Thanks, Convenor. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to put this on record, you know, my thanks to the Deputy Lord Provost for putting this on the agenda. It's my hope that I would think that, you know, this will attract cross party support. Certainly, I know myself and the other ferry ward councillors have been inundated with, you know, inquiries, you know, from the public. And also, many members of the fire service, both serving and past, have been in touch with me to point out that these days, the fire service does a great deal more than just go to fires. They also do an awful lot around fire prevention. They also do a lot of, you know, rescue work. They've got specialist equipment there, special skills. They deal with flooding. They deal, for example, when there's these really strong winds. And you get, for example, old Victorian chimney stacks fall over, like that happened on Dalhousie Road. It's the fire service that actually has to deal with all that. And if they were not around, or if their capabilities were in any way downgraded, it begs the question, really, who else is equipped to do any of this? And so my position on the Balmassey is certainly that it would be a false economy to either downgrade or, God forbid, close the facility. The only acceptable position for me is no change. That is to retain the status quo. And that's certainly the message that's coming through to me aloud and clear from the public. And just a furthermore general point, I mean, it's certainly a matter of concern to not just Broody Ferry but Dundee, it certainly is. But as some fire people have explained to me, that if Balmassey were no longer in the picture, obviously, there are other fire facilities in Dundee. But when you go east, the next nearest fire facility is all the way to Carnoustie. And I think the public would be quite aghast at learning that. So certainly very happy to support this. And, you know, I had hopes to be in a position by now to actually know what the SFRS recommendations actually are. They had given me to understand that they would announce what they were thinking about doing towards the end of May. But certainly, as far as I know, there's been no such announcements. So on the basis that, you know, let's hope for good news. But certainly, if there's any prospect of a downgrade or closure, I know that I certainly won't be alone in opposing that. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Councillor Shears, you're next.
Thanks very much. And again, thanks to the Deputy Lord Provost for bringing this forward. Goes without saying, you'd certainly be supporting it. Like councillor Duncan said, the amount of contacts that we've had as ferry ward councillors has been huge. And you really see what a massive community asset Balmassey Fire Station is, the work they do in the community. It's not always blue lights and screaming engines, although certainly if there was any downgrade in the closure at Balmassey Station, that would be a serious concern. I don't think there's any point that we should be putting community safety for the sake of savings, which is what this seems to be. What I'm going to ask, I'm not going to move it as a formal amendment, because I certainly don't want to divide on this. I would like it to be unanimous. But if the Deputy Lord Provost is open to that, and we also write to the Minister for Victims and Community Safety, what's often the case in these things is the louder you shout, the more likely you are to get noted. So I'm sure, as ward councillors, we've all written to the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service, making our points known. But again, if the Deputy Lord Provost would agree to it, if we could also write to the Minister for Victims of Community Safety, who I believe oversees the fire service, to get our voice in another ear. But like I said, I'm not going to move it as a formal amendment. So if he says no, we'll still go through unanimously.
Just before I bring in Bailey Scott, I could see the Deputy Lord Provost nodding his head there. So I think that tends to mean agreement with your proposition.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm happy to do that after the outcome of this vote is known.
Bailey Scott, please.
I'd like to thank the Deputy Lord Provost as well for bringing this to committee. I had already written to the Chair of the Scottish Fire and Rescue Board, raising my concerns and asking about the consultation. And in reply, I was told that they would be consulting over the summer for 12 weeks. And the two options they're going to consult on are either removing the whole time appliance at Balmassey and maintain the on-call appliance at the station, or an option B would close Balmassey and relocate the whole time appliance up to Kingsbury. So that's the two options they're going to be consulting on, which neither of them are acceptable to us. And as has been said, Balmassey plays a vital role in safeguarding the lives homes and the businesses across the eastern part of Dundee and South Angus. So hopefully, our colleagues on Angus Council will be writing similarly to call for its retention. When Balmassey was first opened in 1981, it was practically an open countryside. There was fields to the north and to the east. And now, nearly 40 years later, there are thousands of homes that have been built, and there are still more being built. And if Balmassey was to be lost, and I think that would create a risk for those people living in the east of the city. I understand that quite a lot of the Scottish Fire Rescue Estate is in a poor condition. But I'm told Balmassey is in a really excellent condition. And those of us who go to the, and have been along to meetings there and the community planning partnership meets there quite regularly, you'll see just what a good condition that it's in. A new roof has been, a new roof was fitted, drainages have been proved, the drill yard was upgraded, new windows have been installed, and it's also got solar panels as well. So it's a very environmentally efficient building, too. It's modern and a well-equipped station. So we shouldn't be losing that. And the crews at Balmassey carry up loads of fire prevention awareness, risk reduction. They build a really good rapport, as you've heard, with the local schools and other community groups. And when it was last being considered for proposal, one of the things that came out of that to help retain it was making it a site for first responders, and with the inclusion of the ambulance crews. But if that was to go, then the time for responding to medical emergencies would be extended as well. I know from being involved in the last time round when it was being considered for closure, there was a huge public outcry about it. And I'm sure that's going to be the same again. And in conclusion, Convenor, I would just make one point, historical point, which I think is worth noting, that when Dundee took Broody Ferry into its boundaries in 1913, one of the conditions of the Annexation Act was that, and I'll read it to you, establish and thereafter maintain in the borough a fire station with staff and all necessary equipment. And they built a fire station in Brown Street, which is now the site of the Brown Street Medical Practice. And when this new fire station was built in, in the 1980s, that one was closed. But although the Boundaries Act from 1913 would have been superseded by various other local government acts, I think the fact that a commitment was made way back then, us as a successor city fathers, I think we have a notice on us to do our very best to try and make sure that that fire station remains where it is and carries on providing the great service that it does.
Bailey Scott, thank you for these comments. Bailey Keenan.
Thanks, Convenor. I'm really pleased that there's been a consensus in the chambers about retaining Balmassey Fire Station. I was one of the councillors that went up. I think Bailey Wright was the same, and went up to Farfar and voted against it. Big divide in Angus between, you know, that thing we're getting offered, another station in Forfar. And yet, the Angus councillors down this end, including the Lord Provost at the time, Helen Osbald, voted for the retention of Balmassey, knowing how much it meant for the community down in Carnoustie that she represented, and knowing how much it meant to Dundee, that it was vitally important that that station remained open. You know, it has since then become a shared resource with the health service for the deployment of the ambulance service. And there is far more houses built in that area now than there was when we fought for it that many years ago to keep open. I'm glad that the Deputy Lord Provost has taken on the right to the minister as well, because I do believe it will need political input to make sure that it doesn't close.
Thanks for that. Deputy Lord Provost, as you want to say, you have the right to sum up?
I'm just grateful for the support of this motion from all the members and the words that are now thankfully transmitted live. So the wider public will be able to hear that we are speaking as one on this issue. And I look forward to joining any campaign to save this station. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Veronica, please.
Item number three, Risk Management Annual Report 2024-2025. This report is for your approval.
So annual report of risk management, as we've heard, view of risks contained in the council's corporate risk register. Any comments or questions on this? Councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. Working on the premise that there's no such thing as a stupid question, I'm going to ask this one. The City Plan Risk, which is DCC004A, on I think page 10 of our bundle, says failure to adequately address poverty and inequalities. And this lists 10 control measures, mostly projects, strategies and plans. Each of these, I assume, will have their own level of risk assessment. The first part of my question then is, do these 10 projects, strategies and plans comprise the service level risks that inform the corporate risk that's detailed in the report?
Yeah, I'm going to pass that to Mr Thompson to answer.
Thank you, councillor McHugh. The corporate risk register is reviewed regularly, as set out in the report. And in part of that, any control measures are updated as part of that process. If I may, for this particular question, can I come back to you with a more fuller response in relation to that matter?
Okay, but I had a part two, which depended on your answer. So if the control measures form or have their own service, have formed several service level risks, are these looked at as a group? So there are 10 control measures mitigations within that one risk. Are these looked at as a group? For example, if eight of the 10 service level risks feeding in the City Plan Risk show an increase in current risk levels, how would that impact the corporate risk score? Have I made that clear? Do you understand what I mean?
Do you think the executive is going to answer that part?
Thanks, Convenor. So councillor McHugh and Mr Thompson can come back with more information. But the projects that are noted in the risk register will form part of the Strategic Leadership Group that is chaired by Mrs May, the Executive Director, and a senior officer with NHS T-Side. So they will be looking at risks across the work that they are doing. And prior to this register coming to the council for approval, it's reviewed by the council leadership team, so that we can take a collective approach on the knowledge that we have around the different projects that cut across different services area to feed the risks that go into it. So it will include individual projects. But over and above that, that includes feedback not just from council partners, and indeed from wider city partners as well.
Okay. Bailey Keenan, you're next.
We're always aware that the trade unions have put an equal pay claim. And there's been a few times I've asked whether we've now got a risk based on that and what the mitigations would be. So is there a risk built in for us at the moment, given that, you know, financially, some equal pay claims across Scotland have been enormous? So funding it would be difficult. So could we have some insight as to whether we've even got to accept that there's a risk and there's a need to start looking at what the mitigations might be?
Mr Mennett, please.
Thank you, Convenor. As the conveners indicated, Bailey Keenan, this is the council risk register, and therefore all risk...
As the conveners indicated, Bailey Keenan, this is the council risk register, and therefore all risks are stated at high level. But refer you to DC 009, which is legislative and statutory compliance, equal pay force within that. I'll look at it and come back to you. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, councillor Rome, you're next, please.
Thank you, Chair. Much like the Liberal Democrat councillors earlier, I've asked this question before, so I'm just going to be consistent. It's another exciting one on risk. And just to be clear, there are a number of risks that are raised here that start off with inherent risk. And then current risk is exactly the same after a number of mitigations. I suppose my only comment would be, can we have a statement below this that says something along the lines of, despite all these mitigatory factors, we do not believe that the risk level should fall any lower. I just feel that we need to be clear that all these factors are making a difference, and they're being done for a specific reason. And we're highlighting that we think that the the level of residual risk can't fall any lower, if that makes sense. Because at the moment, as I say, there's a lot of risks that don't seem to have changed after all the mitigation. And I think we just need to make that clear why that is.
Yes, thanks for that. Mr Thompson, please.
Thank you for the question, councillor Rome. So I can confirm, we can look at that information moving forward in terms of any particular risks and ensure that we include that within the body of the report. And there are a number of risks, as it says, within the risk register. And this is a high level risk register, so particularly where there are significant risks. And perhaps not all the existing control measures are fully mitigating all aspects of the risks then. There will on occasion be areas where they are the same, but within that, there is a level of detail that supports that across a range of different areas that the risks can be affected. So happy to pick that up in future reports and provide that if it would be helpful.
Okay, thanks very much.
Good. So the support's agreed. And Veronica, please.
Item number four, use of Regulation of Investigatory Powers Scotland Act 2000 and Regulation of Investigatory Powers Act 2000. This report is for your approval.
So committee's asked to note the use which council's made of powers contained in the Regulation of Investigatory Powers Act 2000 and in related powers contained in similar act. Six authorizations for direct surveillance with details providing the appendix. Any questions or comments on this report? Not seeing anything, so I'm taking that as approval.
Item number five, sourcing strategy and proposed tender award for electronic social care scheduling and monitoring tool. This is for approval.
Report presents a summary of a sourcing strategy seeks approval to direct award of a further contract regarding use of a software system in social care and Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership. The system ensures the efficient and safety delivery of social care services. Non-review of the system could pose significant risk to the quality and safety of care provided. Contract will be for a initial period of three years with the option to extend for one year. Any questions on item five? Okay, taking that as approval.
Item number six, tender for leisure management system. This is a tender for your approval.
Support finds a summary of a sourcing strategy for a leisure management system seeks approval for direct award via G Cloud 14 Framework for the provision of a leisure management system to Gladstone MRM Limited. The leisure management system provides customers as the joining and booking platform to allow members of the public easy access to sport, physical activity and wellbeing activities. Award of this contract would allow business process continuity. Any questions or comments on this item? So I'm not seeing any, taking that as approval. And I will convener of fair work for the last item on that committee. And on that note, if the present public could please leave, as this item is confidential.
Thank you, convener. Could I also ask IT colleagues to cease the live stream?